We won't see the camera in here, but it will be on. So how do we know if it's on?
We don't know.
So we're just going to go.
Let's just go forward.
Mr. Technology.
All right.
Go for it.
Go for it.
Today.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 4, 2025. I am Chair Rick Vest. To my left is Vice Chair Krista Yokum, and to her left is Commissioner Matt Schulte. To my right are Commissioners Sean Flowerday and Chelsea Johnson. Would you please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is my understanding that the cameras in the room are not going to work and show the meeting, but it is being televised. So we'll go forward with what we have. Mr. Clerk?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed to the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Printing options are available upon request. Commissioners, that brings us to item one minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on January 28, 2025?
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item two, claims. Approval of the claims processed through January 31, 2025?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item three, our special presentation, the County Sheriff 2024 Annual Service Awards.
Good morning, Sheriff Wagner.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to do this. Commissioner Johnson, just for your knowledge, we do our award selection every year in December, and then we make the awards, and the board has graciously allowed us to make these presentations here. So I really appreciate being able to do that. First of our is our citizen's certificate of merit. Caesar Del Godillo Aguilar, on February 24, 2024, Mr. Del Godillo has not been able to be with us, but deputies were detailed to the area of 2,900 West Pleasant Hill Road regarding a medical emergency where a woman was attacked by multiple dogs. Mr. Del Godillo was driving on West Pleasant Hill Road with his family when he noticed a pack of dogs with what he thought was a deer in the roadway. As he got closer, he realized the dogs were attacking a human being, and he began honking his horn to scare the dogs off. After he got the dogs away from the victim, he called 911 and began administering first aid. The victim suffered severe injuries to her head, face, back, and arms, but for his quick actions, the victim's injuries would have been much worse. His willingness to intervene and assist his fellow man is deserving of our Award of Merit, and we'll give that award to him. Our Meritorious Service Award for Deputies Barry Barnett, Daniel Sarns, and John Brady. You guys would come up? On October 8 of last year, deputies Barnett, Sarns, and Brady were detailed to a panic alarm and a possible domestic disturbance at the U-Save Pharmacy in Waverly. The deputy sorted through the information as they formulated their reaction to a highly intense and ever-changing situation. Information including the suspect's history of domestic violence, a standoff with a Nebraska State Patrol SWAT team just two weeks prior, and a victim who feared for her life to the point of asking to be taken to the doctor in hopes of separation from the suspect to evade him. The suspect was determined to be under the influence of alcohol in operating a large and powerful motor vehicle that was much larger than our patrol vehicles. He used that vehicle to avoid arrest by fleeing and eventually ramming law enforcement vehicles. In all, the suspect caused over $41,000 in damage to law enforcement vehicles. His actions resulted in several forced options, including one gunshot fired by another agency. Through all of this, each deputy responded professionally to resolve the situation with the following actions of each deputy being noted below. Deputy Barnett had located the suspect vehicle and maintained surveillance until Deputy Sarns arrived to attempt a felony traffic stop. The suspect fled from the stop, and a pursuit began. Deputy Brady deployed stop sticks, and troopers from the Nebraska State Patrol were able to contain the suspect vehicle and get it stopped. Even after it stopped, the suspect began ramming the police vehicles with his truck in an effort to escape, disabling his vehicle and causing total damages to Deputy Barnett's vehicle. Although his vehicle was disabled, the suspect continued to try to drive toward the officers, revving his engine until it blew up, resulting in a trooper firing a round through the windshield of the suspect vehicle. The suspect was not hit. Deputy Sarns, Brady, and Barnett broke out the driver's side window of the vehicle and removed the suspect from the vehicle, who was still fighting and resisting arrest. A Taser and OC spray were both deployed before taking the suspect into custody. The defendant is still in custody on a $500,000 bond awaiting trial. For their actions, these three deputies were awarded our Meritorious Service Award.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You guys want to say anything?
I really appreciate the support. I appreciate my family, my girlfriend, for being here, and this means a lot. Thank you.
Obviously, we appreciate your guys' support for us as well. And the Nebraska State Patrol, those guys were out there working just as hard as we were. So that collaborative effort obviously took care of this issue, so we appreciate them as well.
Pretty much echo what they said. Thank you for everything you guys do for us. We greatly appreciate it. Thanks to my parents, my daughter who are here, my son, he skipped Thursday, so he's at school, so he couldn't come today. And yes, thanks to the state patrol. Actually, two of the individuals that helped us out are here tonight, Trooper Lewis and Trooper Cook there. I'd like to thank them for their help and everything. And just thank you to the people I work with at the sheriff's office. This is a great group of people. That's all I can say.
Had to be a very intense period of time with all the uncertainties you all were facing out there.
Absolutely it was. And the one thing I will say is, knowing the training and experience that I've had and that the individuals I was working with had, you have to rely on each other, and we did, and it worked out well for everybody. So, yeah.
That was a chaotic and dangerous situation, to say the least. Thank you for your, we'll say, dynamic response to an ever-changing situation. Really, thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, listening to the radio was, it was, yeah, it was, you could tell things were going south quick, you know, so. Next is one of our lifesaving awards, Deputy Jason Skolberg. Jason just had rotator cuff surgery, so he's got a wounded wing. On July 18, 2024, Deputy Skolberg responded to the Waverly Swimming Pool on an 11-year-old who was not responsive after having been underwater for some time. Deputy Skolberg took over CPR. The victim responded several times during the resuscitation attempts, but would become unresponsive again. Skolberg instructed the lifeguards to open their AEDs, which indicated that shock was needed. CPR was halted, shock was administered, and CPR continued once again until Waverly Fire and Rescue arrived. While EMTs advised they had a pulse, the victim was still unresponsive. After the victim was transported to the hospital, an EMT told Skolberg the victim was alert and talking, even though he was in and out of cardiac arrest in route to the hospital. The victim was eventually transported to Omaha Children's Hospital for further testing, and to my knowledge, has made a full recovery. And thanks to Deputy Skolberg for his quick actions. Appreciate your hard work there. Thank you.
Thank you for guys, for the support. I'd like to thank the lifeguards that were out at Waverly. They did the right thing, responded appropriately. Waverly Fire and Rescue and Lincoln Fire and Rescue and all the Brian West staff, so did a great job, and he's doing well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy.
Thank you.
And good luck with your recovery.
Yeah, I think that's the theme in all of these, is a team of, not just us, but all the other folks involved that really make the outcomes successful in these.
Terry. In these endeavors. Terry, item two. Did we skip item two?
That's what we just did.
Yeah.
He went out of order on our list, but he just didn't.
Okay. I got it. Forget it. I over said.
Okay. Our second lifesaving award is Deputy Zachary Anshazi. Is that here? Deputy Anshazi is not with us, but on July 29, a medical call came out that a 72-year-old man had suffered a traumatic laceration from an angle grinder. Deputy Anshazi, he was working a grant-funded traffic detail at the time, but realized he was the closest unit and responded. He arrived before any medical units and began applying a tourniquet, successfully stopping the bleeding. The victim was transported by medical units for his injuries, but for Deputy Anshazi's quick response and immediate treatment, the victim may not have survived his injury. So for his actions, Deputy Anshazi will be awarded the lifesaving award as well. Our Professional Employee of the Year, Administrative Aid Lisa Cook. Since taking the position of Administrative Aid, Lisa has been a mentor to his successor in the Courts Division, who nominated her for this award. In addition, another deputy nominated Lisa for her positive work attitude, superior work ethic, and desire to serve others. Lisa makes sure all employees have the equipment necessary to do their jobs. She has learned Oracle in short order to make sure all employees are paid for their work. While this description may sound quite simple and just doing her job, it's a big deal to have someone who pays attention to detail and makes sure all employees are well taken care of. Lisa is a 21-year Lancaster County employee after serving as a deputy sheriff in Fillmore County for two years. She spent eight years with the Department of Corrections before coming to the sheriff's office. She began as a building security officer and was a sergeant in that unit before transitioning to the administrative aid position. There are numerous commendations in her file for her exemplary performance in all aspects of her job. Lisa and her husband Charlie, a Nebraska State Trooper who also was involved in the Waverly incident, have been married 20 years this April. Congratulations.
I just wanted to tell the sheriff's office thank you for my new job opportunity, and also thank you to my husband, and then also thank you to you guys for always supporting us.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for all your work. For the county at multiple levels.
I think the biggest success I heard in there was that you figured out Oracle.
I was just gonna say, nothing, nothing about taking on Oracle is easy or simple. Thank you.
I wasn't gonna editorialize about that, but if you know Oracle, you know that's a big deal that she's mastered that.
Had to get that in. Okay.
And our Deputy Sheriff of the Year is Deputy Jason Schneider. If that last name rings a bell, his father Craig was a deputy for about 33 years. Deputy Schneider was nominated for Deputy Sheriff of the Year by his supervisor for his superior performance every day. Deputy Schneider is very proactive, keeping busy from the time he starts his shift until the end. In 2024, he issued 277 citations, resulting in 409 charges. 22 of those were possession of a controlled substance, 16 were possession of marijuana, and issued 75 warnings for a total of 352 traffic stops. He is a resource on his shift with regard to writing search warrants and subpoenas. He's extremely articulate and has the information necessary for the judge to sign the warrant. In addition to his regular duties, he's a veteran member of our crash team, which is our accident investigation team. He's assistant team leader for our field force, a Taser instructor, and a field training officer. He was recently selected as an investigator for the Criminal Interdiction Unit. Jason, a Navy, a Davie, Nebraska native, graduated from Raymond Central High School, earned a degree in radiologic, radiologic technology from Southeast Community College, and he's been a deputy sheriff for almost 12 years now. Congratulations, Jason.
I'd just like to thank you guys for all your support at the sheriff's office. I'd like to thank Sheriff Wagner. I'd like to thank Chief Deputy Houchen. I'd like to thank everybody in the Patrol Division more. Most of all, Sergeant Bryant for nominating me for this award. It was a pleasure to work with him. I'd like to thank my family who's in the back. But most of all, I'd like to thank my wife. This award came with a lot of overtime and a lot of hard work, and I definitely wouldn't be here without her. So she deserves the award way more than I do. So, thank you.
Thank you. And last is our Honorable Discharge for employees who have been with us for more than 10 years and who have retired from the sheriff's office. Margie Stinson is here. Margie served Lancaster County for over 20 years and did a great job and retired last year. Come on up. Margie worked at our front counter handling incoming civil process and was a civil clerk and just did a great job, and we miss her, but glad you're enjoying retirement. Thank you. Christopher Laird retired from the sheriff's office after serving 10 years with us. He spent 33 years with LPD as a Lincoln Police Officer and a number of years as a sergeant major in the Army Reserve. So Chris couldn't be with us today, but he retired last year as well after his 10 years of service. So those are our Service Award recipients. Thank you very much.
Sheriff, thank you so much for coming this morning and sharing this with us and everyone else. It's just an honor to have the high level of commitment that your department consistently displays, and the service to the public in whatever form that takes. So thank you to everyone who was here this morning.
I picked up a theme of collaboration here, collaboration among the department, collaboration with outside departments and the Waverly pool staff there. That's what makes our community great, and thank you for your role in that. Every one of these situations would have had a different outcome if you weren't where you were when you needed to be. And Lisa, I appreciate seeing you back in our chambers. This is great. But also, even in your role, you know from your previous experience, they couldn't do what they did unless you were doing what you do behind the scenes to keep them going. And I do want to acknowledge the families. I'm glad that some of you are here because I know my husband was a first responder. I know what it's like to send people out to their next shift not knowing what the outcome is. You know they're well-trained. You know that they know their role, but you also don't know what they might encounter in a day. So, thank you all.
That's it.
One of my favorite things about this is always seeing how many members of your staff and just the total team come out, and really the whole law enforcement community come out to support the award winners every year when this happens. I really, really appreciate that, and I really appreciate just all of the work your team does for us, keeping us safe each year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you to all of the law enforcement in the room, those who received awards today. Congratulations, and thank you for your service, and everyone else who's here, families, just everyone in law enforcement. Thank you for keeping our community safe. It's very appreciated.
Yeah, I always enjoy, I'm always impressed by your leadership and your deputies and staff that are serving our community. So thank you, Sheriff, as well as everybody else for doing what you're doing. Keep it up.
They make me look pretty good. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Give once more.
Commissioners, that brings us to item four, the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent, and the individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-24-0815 with Jones Automotive Incorporated for supply and installation of emergency equipment for city and county law enforcement vehicles, C-23-0353 with Advanced Door and Dock Systems LLC for overhead door replacement services, C-23-0102 with Select Van and Storage, and C-23-0103 with World Class Office Installers Incorporated for moving services, C-22-0076 with Hoodmasters Incorporated for kitchen exhaust, hood, and equipment cleaning, B, right-of-way contracts with the following, the Schmidt Family Revocable Trust on Northwest 84th Street and Highway 6 in the amount of $26, Diane Gropp, Southwest 86th Street and West Panama Road in the amount of $703, C, Utility Permit 2607 with Charter Spectrum for fiber installation along and maintenance along Mill Road, and D, Renewal from Micro Focus Government Solutions LLC for content manager software licenses.
I move approval of the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, our public hearing. Public hearing on a request to vacate portions of a public road located near 141st Street in Lancaster County.
Oh, sorry. We will now open the We will now open the public hearing.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Is the overhead working?
It will.
It is. Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is a request to vacate north of 141st Street between Agnew Road and Rock Creek Road. This road was originally petitioned in 1882, so it's an older one. It's been there for a while. And it primarily follows the half-mile line. At the north end, Bridge A-79, which is shown up in here, is, has been closed since 2016 due to some back wall issues and also some scour issues. At the south end, the road actually followed the red lines there. It actually did a jog to the east. This was primarily done from the most research we can find, some kind of an oxbow existed. That road actually did follow that red line into some aerial maps we have from the 1950s. Sometime after that, it did get moved back over to the half-mile line. Lancaster County has been deeded, actually the parts shown in yellow here, that was all based upon the road, or excuse me, a bridge project which is down in here. That bridge was repaired and maintenance done on it in 2006, 2007. So we were deeded the right-of-way then, and the road was shifted into that yellow area. At that point, there are three existing property owners that are affected by this road vacation. All three of those property owners have agreed, they've sent letters, they've agreed to this vacation. So that's very important to get that part of it done. Lancaster County would deed back to the adjacent property owners, the area is shown in yellow. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, has been in contact with the Peterson family. They have agreed, or excuse me, one of the concerns from the planning department was access to Mr. Blumstrom's property, which is shown up in here. To provide that access and easement would have to be created, and Pam has talked to the Peterson family, and they have verbally agreed to allow an easement across their property to allow access to that property, and that is something we can definitely help them with creating an easement. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you would have it.
Can you just go put both maps up real quick, just so I'm clear? Are you, this vacation is for just the red, the blue, the yellow?
The colors on here were indicating the different property owners. The blue is for the property owners over here, and the red is all for, this is the same property owner, and the Peterson family owns this part in yellow.
So Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, the...
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. So this is kind of an odd deal for a number of reasons. We have a mile of road. It has never been graded. It has never had gravel on it. It is adjacent to critical saline wetland habitat and critical endangered species habitat for the tiger beetle as well as the salt wart. Here's the unfortunate thing, has a lot, has a significant amount of floodplain across this mile also. So as denoted by the exhibit that, I mean, almost the entire mile. Where we're at here is, in order to repair or replace this bridge, we would have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers and get a permit, and I'm gonna have to say that I have no alternative than to damage this critical habitat or use more of it for the road. In this case, because there is a road a half a mile away, I can't make that justification. And so the road has been closed for a significant period of time. Ms. Peterson is here in the audience today, and she might step forward and say a few things. The thing is, is she's concerned that now the road's been closed for so long that it's a danger if someone would come down it, and then because the bridge is closed, they've had to do some different things with their farming operation, which means they're loading cattle on this right-of-way, which is also, you know, of concern. And so the reality is, it's really not possible for us to upgrade this road and fix the bridge, so we just need to go ahead and vacate the road. The oxbow being plotted outside of the roadway being plotted outside of the section line is something that we've come across actually in three or four other places in the county, and I think it was probably standard practice maybe in the late 1800s. And I have to say, when we find it, it is on occasion a bit of a surprise.
Easier, I get it, easier than building a bridge.
Mm-hmm.
So just to clarify, it's vacating all the colors, the red, the yellow, the blue, the...
Correct.
Entire.
Entire, a sec. Go ahead.
The mile itself is a road long.
Let me, I don't have long enough arms to put my finger over the road we're not vacating and still reach the microphone. So we're not vacating the...
The right-of-way. We're going from the right-of-way, the north right-of-way line of Rock Creek Road to the south right-of-way line of Agnew Road, so we would still have those easements and those right-of-ways going east and west.
In essence, we're just unplugging it at both ends.
Correct. And then deeding back what we currently own or have a deed to, to the adjacent property owners, which is what you standard, what you've standardized done.
Any other questions? Thank you. I will do that. Thank you. Yeah. Anyone else wishing to testify about this issue?
Hi.
Swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Can you state your name?
Paula Peterson, and I am one of the landowners, and we're also the tenant for the Gary Blumstrom part of the pasture. We have been talking to Gary about, it's like five lots all put together, that we will work with the, try to get them all put into one, get it changed so it's actually one lot, because it's all one piece on the pasture, so it can all be one lot. And so we wouldn't need to worry about so much about having access to the middle part, which is cut with a little creek in between. And so we'll be, we're working with Gary on trying to get that part of that fixed also. My biggest concern and the reason Pam and I have been talking about it, and Rick's been having to listen to me over the years about it too, is we have cattle on both sides of where that bridge is, and in order to move them from one side, we actually have to take them out on Agnew Road and bring them around. Our goal is to try to keep the roadways as safe as possible. This road has never been anything but dirt. It's between both of our pasture, or both pastures, and we just really request that if you guys can see it, we would really appreciate it. We really appreciate all the efforts the maintenance crew and the engineering staff does to keep our roads in the shape that they are, and if we can eliminate one mile, that's okay, they can go someplace else. So that's all I really have. I just want to thank you, but I'd really, really like you to consider this. If you have any questions, that's kind of why I came in today.
Any question? It's really helpful to us, Paula, that the landowners adjacent to it are all in support and get what we heard was all three of you...
Yep, I worked on that.
Not surprised.
You know I'm so shy.
I've had pie at your house with a lot less friendlier group than most people would allow.
Yeah, that's all I had, though, if you didn't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else wishing to testify on this issue? We will close the public hearing.
Commissioners, that brings us to item six, new business. Item 6A, a resolution authorizing and directing Andrew Varness to correct non-pro-tongue clerical error in county resolution R-25-0005, as shown in Exhibit A.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve any further discussion.
We're on 6A?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I got, I got called by some people from the community yesterday. Just help me first of all know what the purpose of this is.
Do you want to take the 10,000 foot over?
Sure.
You put it on the public.
Steve Hendrickson of the Planning Department. So in a very quick sense, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this, and typically a resolution would be prepared to show the resolution and the conditions of approval. It was appealed to the county board within minutes, and so the Planning Department, we didn't have a resolution prepared. It was later determined, nope, that's even procedurally, let's make sure there is still a resolution. And so at the last moment, we put together a resolution, and one of the statements that was in there in this whole conditions of, is it to a property line or is it to the dwelling? Is it to a non-participating with the dwelling? The word dwelling got left off, so we had to then correct the Planning Commission version of the resolution. And then in reviewing that, and then also talking with some property owners who wanted to make sure they had an understanding of what got approved, it was noted that the text about the setback to the inverters that is measured to the property line, not to the wall of a dwelling, was in the Planning Commission resolution. It was not amended by the county board, so it should be in your resolution as well. And so since it is measured differently than the other setbacks, which you did change, which are measured to the wall of dwelling, in this case, the setback to the inverters is to the property line, that could actually result in a bigger setback. And in the example of where the dwelling is 300 feet into the property, and the setback is 450, you'd only have 150-foot setback to the inverters. So by keeping the condition that was in the Planning Commission resolution and should have been in yours as well, by having that 300-foot setback to the property line to the inverters, you'll actually keep that setback even though the dwelling might be further back. And that's just basically so that when the people are out enjoying their yard or doing things in their yard, the inverters, which make the noise, are the 300-foot back as recommended by the Planning Commission and should have been in your resolution. So that is what the correction is, is that was left out, and we wanted to make sure that it's all clear that that actually should have been in there.
Can we have Andrew put the correct document on the screen? Because we're just, what the action we are discussing is to approve resolving clerical errors that were made.
Right.
And the document that was linked online is not, is not the correct document, correct?
Correct. So that was with the actual resolution plus with the relativity, so this is the actual non-pro-tongue resolution, so I'm just gonna show for the record, non-pro-tongue resolution. And then essentially, here are the, in legislative form, as Steve laid out, essentially the Schulte amendment changed 1.8, and then Commissioner Johnson, your amendment changed 1.10. And as Steve laid out, that technically 1.9 was not changed by any of the board's recommendations. And so that's the reason why this is a clerical error, because we're not changing anything substantive, because this survives the whole entire process. And that's the reason why we can use a non-pro-tongue resolution.
Legal white-out.
Yep.
So just clarifying, so, which I think the people I heard from would be very supportive of this, so this is saying that in inverters cannot be within 300 feet of a property line. Does not say, does it say non-participating property line?
Yes.
Non-participating property line, and the 450 remains in existence, as we talked about.
Nothing changes on that front.
The one piece that I guess I have a question about is, so was 1.9, why does the Lancaster County Health Department have the ability to change that then?
That was the motion that was made by Commissioner Dick Campbell, and was recommended by the Planning Commission. I think their thought was that if, at some point in the future, inverters are quiet as could be, and you could prove to the Health Department that our inverters in Project X are silent as possible, that perhaps the setback would be less to the inverters if you could prove to the Health Department that the noise standards for yours are less.
All the sound testing we do is always through the Health Department. It's the same way with the turbines, and so, because the concern about inverters is that they're loud.
Loud.
That it goes to the Health Department for them to be the ones to measure it.
The 300-foot setback...
Don't worry.
Yes.
They're not...
They will be the last group to be, throw caution to the wind, so to speak, and just reduce it. I think they will very much want to make sure it's a third-party noise study and that it was done. And quite frankly, the 300-foot is really quite a good distance, so that should really bring it down to a lower level. So I think they just put that in there in case technology changes in the future.
By all means, go talk to the Health Department about their sound studies. I've been frustrated more than once with the responses, "I think you'd love them." I'm going nuts.
Good. Like I said, I'm just trying to make sure that we are protecting what was originally proposed.
Yes.
And maybe providing some public clarity that the 300 setback still exists. On top of that, some places may experience the 450 from a dwelling.
Well, and as Steve, you know, pointed out, you know, thank God, you know, for the people who brought this to our attention, because without this, you know, you would have instances, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, where an inverter, if we didn't have this, an inverter would actually be closer, you know, and it would still satisfy the 450-foot rule, but without this, you know, it'd be still loud. But with this, it'd...
Because the 450-foot is measured to the dwelling wall, the 300-foot is measured to the property line.
Commissioner Johnson?
I was just gonna say, and this is what we thought, this is what I thought we were approving.
Yes.
Like, this is the same, yeah. I agree. It doesn't change our intent.
The substantive stuff hasn't changed.
It's good to have clarified.
Any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flaherty? Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6B, a resolution in the matter of adopting benefits for county employees in the unclassified service.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. This resolution changes one provision, and I believe it's under number 14. It is to extend the hiring incentive for the psychologist and clinical director positions at the Mental Health Crisis Center. Grant funding, it was a pilot project with an end date for the hiring incentive. Now there's funds available at the end of that, so we're extending the end date, and that's why this amendment's before you.
Yeah, I will move approval of this. This is, you've heard me talk about it before probably, but this is really important first to use up those funds that we have available, but also specifically for these positions. So I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6C, a resolution in the matter of traffic control device installation at the intersections of South 54th Street and Roca Road, South 68th Street and Roca Road, and South 54th Street and Saltillo Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I have put my laptop screen up on the overhead to show the locations in which we are proposing become permanent four-way stops. We do have flashers on all of these alerting the public, and we believe that this is the best solution for these three areas.
Very good.
I would move approval. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Matt?
I have a question. So we, last week when we talked about this, you had said this study indicates that recommends these stay in place. You had talked a little bit about the roundabout at Saltillo and 54th. There was one other recommendation in the traffic study I'm just curious about. I've mentioned that when I, heading towards Hickman, I've gotten stacked up there at Roca Road before, and the study also recommends putting in a left-turn lane there. I was wondering if that's something that the county engineer is planning to address or what that might look like.
So Commissioner Schulte, I appreciate you reading the nearly 100 pages of the traffic study. That being said, as you're aware, we do have a federal aid project that we're working on in the area. We're working really hard on it because it's my stretch goal, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to make it, by the way, to be able to do both 68th Street projects at the same time. I don't know if I can get the north of Hickman, 68th Street project... I don't know if I can get the north of Hickman 68th Street project caught up with that, but those are things that we would address when we do that north federal aid project.
Okay. Does, the north one goes all the way up to past Roca?
The, the north 68th Street piece goes from the edge of the Hickman city jurisdiction all the way north to where the shoulders end on South 68th Street, south of the roundabout that is now 70th Street.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
I just said, like.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have, because your question is a bit of a surprise to me this morning, I don't have the geometry with me to, to show you, but yeah.
That's fine, that's fine. I.
So again, stretch goal was to get 68th Street, you know, I guess I'll call it stabilized for current conditions, not probably finished forever, right? But all the way from the end of where it currently has shoulders, all the way down to Firth.
Yeah. So I guess I would just point out, during that process, however you want to do that, this traffic study does recommend a left turn lane there, heading south on 68th Street. I think we should try to incorporate that in any future plans to, to address that.
So, and, and we will, as we go forward, and, and when we meet, we'll talk again that the work we're planning on South 68th Street is gonna have a point in time where we need to say, this is it for this project.
Yeah.
And, and we need to, we need to move on. And so there have been other modifications requested, but I really need to finish the current federal aid project. So, you know, we, we will look at these things and we will incorporate them as we're, as we're able to.
Okay.
Very good. I got lost. Did we have a motion on this one? We did have a motion, thank you. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowering?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6D, resolution in the matter of authorizing the county board chair to sign a construction cost reimbursement agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This item and the item that precedes it are in regards to Old Chaney, in between 77 and the railroad tracks, which is currently the county's jurisdiction, although the city is on either side of us. Nebraska Department of Transportation approached us about our bridge at this location. Some of you are aware that we've done significant rehab to this bridge over the last several years. It's a, it's one of my, it's one of our poorly rated bridges. It's not my favorite. That being said, the state, as they upgrade 77 to become the West Beltway, they're gonna need to put some additional traffic on this. They have agreed to split the cost with us of doing some additional rehab to this bridge, as well as additional rehab to the asphalt shown in red on my exhibit.
Well done.
Can we just give them the bridge?
Um, you know, Commissioner Schulte, I'm, I'm very generous with giving, gifting infrastructure wherever I can, and in this case, we probably can't gift NDOT this bridge, but maybe we can gift another entity this bridge in the future.
We'll look for other options.
Yeah.
I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item E. D, are we on D, Matt? D.
We're on D.
We're on D.
Item D. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowering?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6E, an agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation to reimburse the county for 50% of the construction costs associated with the county asphalt overlay project on Old Chaney Road from the South First Street intersection east to the Burlington North-Santa Fe railroad tracks with the bridge deck to repair, County Bridge O-37. The asphalt overlay construction estimate is $170,985.60, of which the state's share is $85,492.80. The bridge deck repair construction estimate is $369,938, of which the state's share is $184,969.
You may need to write a pamphlet on this, Pam. I'm just so impressed you got NDOT to jump in and share the costs on something.
You know, it's interesting, Commissioner Vest, on occasion, we have discussions with our, I'll call them our infrastructure partners, whether that be the city of Lincoln or some of the smaller cities and villages in Lancaster County, as well as NDOT. For this one, they came to us. And so they came to us, they had the discussion, we did some investigation. So I, I really want to give them credit for approaching us and helping us out with this.
Very good.
Mutual benefit. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flowering?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6F, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award a bid to Whitehead Oil Company and Sapros Incorporated for motorfield and estimated cost of $1,450,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is for our, our annual gas supply. You may or may not be aware that we do serve as the gas stations for everyone in the county. Currently, gas is more expensive. In the past, we have been able to hedge the price of the, of our fuel in order to stabilize pricing for not just the county engineer's department, but all the other departments that get gas from us. We're not currently doing that, and so we may need to look at that in the future, because although hedging is a risk, it has been a financial benefit and it adds us to have stability in our cost.
Usually your bets come out.
Do what you can.
So far, they have 100%, but of course, that's never a guarantee.
I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowering?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6G, a contract with Michael Todd and Co. Incorporated for the annual supply of snowplow er, nuts, bolts, and washers at a cost not to exceed $5,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve any discussion. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowering?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6H, real estate purchase and sale agreement authorizing the sale of county-owned properties located at 101 North 30th Street and 2220 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, to Center Point.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve these sales. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowering?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6I, contract with Brown Brothers Incorporated for labor and materials to complete an additional phase of the county sheriff first-floor remodel project as described as Exhibit A, and it had a cost of $62,619.59.
Good morning, Commissioner Sarah Sump, Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. This will be the final piece to move the wallpaper and chair rail from both the first floor and the fir-, the lower basement part of it. And all of the funding is actually coming out of our forfeited assets, so there will be actually no impact to our budget.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flowering?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Sarah, as always, tell the sheriff that it was only due to your diligent efforts that we approved this.
I certainly will, thank you.
All right.
6J, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county sheriff to award and execute a purchase order to Woodhouse Ford Incorporated for current year model sport utility vehicle in the amount of $35,777.
So this is part of our annual budget, is one of our unmarked cars for our criminal division. We're able to get a 2025 Pathfinder out of this, so that'll be good. Should be our last car for this year, pending.
Good job.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowering?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to 6K, FEMA acknowledgement and receipt of flood insurance policies for the following properties, 500 West O Street, 443 Cherry Creek Road, Building C, and 444 Cherry Creek Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Having had the leadership opportunity to work with FEMA many times in my career, sometimes these things come forward like this, and you're like, wow, what is this? And the reality is, is FEMA's trying to call attention to the fact that we have buildings, in particular 444 Cherry Creek, that the entire campus is only a tenth of a foot, the buildings, out of the floodplain, which really means that when the city's floodplain is revised here in the future, that we will be in the floodplain. Or in the event that there was a levee failure or a breach of Branch Oak Dam, that the entire facility, the entire campus, all facilities would be underwater. This is enough of a hazard that we have a hazard mitigation plan that calls for an evacuation plan of the campus. What I will humbly say is, this is not resilient for where we repair 100% of county vehicles and fuel, as well as our, our general engineering operation. So I just wanted to call everyone's attention to this continued issue for us in the future.
Very good.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowering?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item seven, our legislative update.
So obviously, this board took a position to oppose the inheritance tax proposal. I made the motion on that last week, and we said that, you know, I, actually in my motion, I said that, you know, we had said we would get on board if we thought the funds were sustainable. Our budget director was here, he said they weren't. I, it, since then, I have been asked by NACO and some others if we would consider moving our support, or not our support, but our position to conditional opposition, that if we thought that the funds were sustainable and a dollar-for-dollar replacement, then we would, you know, at least move to neutral. That's kind of where I thought we were already at anyways. I'm not philosophically opposed to getting rid of the inheritance tax. It's much more about just, don't create a $9 million hole in our budget, that then we can only backfill with property taxes, please. So I'm going to make a motion to amend it. Honestly, I, I barely think, think we need to do this, but I'm gonna do it to make some people happy. I'm gonna make a motion that we amend our position from opposition to conditional opposition, assuming that we, that, you know, we find the, the funding sustainable and it's a clear dollar-for-dollar replacement.
I'll second.
And what I've basically told the folks at NACO is, convince Dennis Meyer. If Dennis Meyer looks me in the eye with a straight face and tells me that it's sustainable funding and it's a dollar-for-dollar replacement, I'll get out of your way.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Sean. And I know, I think we had the same conversation with NACO, who are coming in conditional support. And so Thursday, I told them we had taken a position of opposition. They asked for this change, and they've had conversations with Sean and myself. I don't think fundamentally it changes anything for us.
I honestly think we're in this exact, like, I think it's what we said. Like, I think it's, I think it's consistent with our position before. If it makes them happier to add the word conditional to the front end, fine. Also, nobody else goes to legislature in conditional positions. Like, that's just not a thing. It's not a thing that people do, but NACO does it. So like, I don't know, it's fine. I don't care. We can do it.
Our concern is still what subsequent legislatures might do with those funds and that it isn't sustainable that way. That's, that's the message we want to get across.
Absolutely.
I, I've been very clear with him, convinced my budget director, that the, the funding is sustainable and that it's a dollar-for-dollar replacement, and I don't want to have an opinion on this.
But what's proposed isn't a dollar-for-dollar.
It's more complicated than that.
Dennis said it didn't, didn't, but now, what's gonna be argued, for, for what it's worth, column, is if they only get X amount of dollars, they will only reduce the percentages on Class 2 and 3 by X amount that is supposed to be equivalent to whatever revenue they generate. The other concern that we expressed, and there were several, I want to make sure we put these in front of us, was the impact on others who are now, we're, we're saying, this group, you no longer have any responsibility to pay costs to the county to support county government. The people that are going to be paying that in lieu of them, that has an impact that we are very concerned about. And especially if those funds didn't go through by the, on the state side to affordable housing and processes like that. Making sure that the money stays with the county, making sure that it covers our reduction in costs. Those were the three concerns that I think we had.
I mean, it's undoubtedly a tax shift of some kind or another. There's really no way to do it without having that, unless someone's inventing new revenues that are coming out of somewhere else.
Well, there's impact to the behavioral health regions, which would then shift to us, so that we would need to come up with that revenue as we.
Is that end of the dox stamp getting touched? I thought it was just the affordable housing part, which I don't like, but I didn't think it.
That was my understanding, but I can't guarantee that. Either way, there's things that we really value.
Right.
That are going to be impacted. I'm not 100% clear.
I mean, I, I, look, I had a really clear conversation with NACO yesterday about this of it, just like, why are they working so hard to try to make this happen? And they, I mean, they were pretty clear. They said they felt like they didn't have any, any other choice, that this is gonna happen at some point, so they want to try to secure some revenues. I also asked if anyone had just run a vote card, and I'm not sure they have. So I don't know. I'm, I feel dubious about the whole approach, but it's fine. It, it, I, I think my position was already conditional opposition, because we laid out the, we laid out our trouble with it. It's not that we are philosophically for the inheritance tax, it's that getting rid of it creates a hole in our budget, that we don't have another mechanism of property taxes to fix. So I feel like we were already there, fine if this makes some people happy. I'm happy to say it's conditional opposition.
I see, I see NACO's trying to represent the entire state, I think is really challenging. I had a conversation with a commissioner in a smaller populated county yesterday, who said that their inheritance tax is historically less than $100,000. And this year to, or this past year, to date, it was like 8,000. So it's completely a different story in these other counties, but this is such a huge impact for us.
And, and, and don't forget that trying to represent the entire state equally is also undemocratic, so.
True.
Before we veer off into that ditch, Will, I think we'll, I think we've covered this. Yeah, Matt?
I was just gonna say, I've, over the years, I've heard, couple of years, I've heard a lot of, how do I say this, support for the repeal of the inheritance tax from people in my district. And so I've taken kind of different approaches to this. On Thursday, I opposed the opposition of, of the, however you say it.
Yeah.
I think I'm going to just continue to vote no on this at this point because it sounds like we're not substantively changing what we're asking to do, so.
I, I actually agree with that, I don't think we are substantively changing it.
So I'll continue voting no on this.
This is a semantics thing, that what it does is maintains a relationship with NACO, who's come in on, it's a little different experience this year than a year ago. They're actually been supporting on a lot of initiatives that I put in front of them. And so we're working, trying to maintain a positive relationship there. That's the biggest outcome.
They like Rick, they're mad at me.
Can I just ask, just to make sure I understand? So our position is basically the same as last week. We're just changing the label on it. We are not philosophically opposed to getting rid of the inheritance tax. We just want to make sure that it's a dollar-for-dollar. We're going to get the same revenue. And we don't quite, we still don't quite like the places where they're going for the tax shift. So it's just the same that we talked about last week, we're just changing our, okay?
I find, I find the difference entirely semantic. It seems to matter to them, so sure.
Okay.
That's a great suggestion, Commissioner. Really, you captured it and I appreciate you putting that in front of us. So with that, we have a motion and a second to change our position from opposition to conditional opposition. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
No.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Very good. Anything else on the legislative update?
I did reach out to our, last week I brought up a bill about the clerk of the district court and I realized he was, our clerk was not here. So I did call him yesterday to have a good conversation with him about the bill. So I, just so you guys know, I invited him, told him on Thursday we may be discussing that one, so. He'll probably show up on Thursday, obviously encourage you guys to reach out to him as well. He's kind of, kind of a unique position because he's not actually elected to.
He didn't run for.
Right.
Which puts him, gives him a different perspective than most other clerks in the district court who were elected, so.
Confident, that's true. Very good. If nothing else, are we still doing executive session? We are, okay. We'll read a motion.
I move that we go into executive session for legal advice and to protect the public interest. We have shorter words on it. Second.
That was just, that was just muscle.
Oh, at 10:05. Eight.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries?
We are now in executive session.
I would move to come out of executive session at 10:22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to come out of executive session, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries? That brings us to item nine, public comment.
Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on items not related to the agenda? Seeing nine, we'll move on.
Item 10, announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a mid-year budget hearing on Thursday, February 6, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Thursday, February 11, 2025, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Allen KTV. Allen KTV is available on channel two and spectrum channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit linkit NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. Allen KTV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. L N K T V apps are available on Roku, Apple T V, and Amazon Fire T V. Uh, item eleven is adjournment.
Who will be adjourned?
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
We are adjourned. I will now open the Lancaster County Board of Equalization, Equalization Meeting for Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster dot n e dot gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the minutes. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the additions and deductions. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is the Assessors two thousand and twenty-five preliminary recommendations on the four fifty-one tax exemption applications for nursing facilities.
Anything we need to talk about here?
It's like four fifty-five applications for nursing facilities is a.
Brian Grimm Lancaster County Assessor Register of Deeds. It's basically our preliminary values for, uh, the skilled nursing facilities that also have Medicaid beds that, um, there's a, a new form that comes out that we, we filed these, so we have to present them to you, and then I believe there's ten days after that, uh, a decision can be made.
So, Brian, you know, there's a history here with these kind of facilities. Are we seeing anything unusual or that's going to create concern?
Not that I could see. It's, it's just a straightforward percentage of the Medicaid beds that, that they utilize compared to the percentage of, of their total beds. Uh, and then they run the averages of those going back three years. Does the form make more sense than it did? I didn't see the previous form, so. Did you hear about this? Yes. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. The department put out a form asking questions that just didn't like, they just weren't things that existed. And, and people were like, we don't know how to do this, but I've, I've heard, I've heard that it's fixed now and it's better now. It was a little confusing. Yeah.
Yeah, you walked into the middle of this, as I recall, Brian. It's like, we've got fires everywhere and.
Still here, though.
You made it through.
Appreciate it. That was a, that was a steep learning curve and.
Oh, my gosh.
So I just want.
You'd be forgiven for having some feelings about it.
Yeah, it was, it was a challenge. I just wanted to clarify, these have already been mailed out and we're just now seeing them or we're seeing them and then that big.
You're, you're seeing these for, for the first time, then it's, it's making a decision based on that.
I don't want to prepare for the calls. Okay, that's fine.
But you don't think there's any.
These are forms we received from them. We're not generating those, correct?
Correct. But you don't think, think that the underlying values are, I mean, no one wants to pay more, but you don't think that we're not, are we experiencing any hundred percent jumps or four hundred percent jumps or anything like that? No. Yeah, okay. No.
Bottom line for us is, yeah, what's gonna make the news here?
When I get my, my head plugged in in forty-five minutes, how bad will it be?
Well, you talk about surviving, Sean, and here you are after all of that and.
That was the worst pill I ever passed.
Oh, so much. Well, I would entertain a.
Actually, can I just ask one more question? I'm just looking at these forms. These forms are just what they're providing us. I don't, am I overlooking the actual proposed valuations in it? In the form?
What the, what it is is a percentages, let me get one of them here. It's an approval for percentage. There's a few of them. There were some rounding errors that, um, we put in there the approval of percentage that they would get for exemption. So this isn't the underlying valuation. This is the percentage of the, of the four fifty-one tax exemption that they're getting. Correct. That makes sense. Yeah. Because, because we said if you're for profit and you are offering Medicaid beds, then you get to take off that much percentage off of your property taxes.
Because, yeah, we were looking at putting people out of business, yeah.
So, in these numbers, we're not going to be able to review them and, and go, this makes sense to us or not, because we won't know how many Medicaid beds they have. We just have to go off of what they say. Correct. That's fine.
There's, if you could just, on page forty-six of this document, there's a really weird percentage. If you could just look at that and get back to me on it, I'd appreciate it. It says that the percentage of, percentage of occupied Medicaid beds is sixty-eight thousand percent?
There was a few of them that were, that were typos.
Okay.
That, that I noticed, and they, they base that on a per day basis.
Okay.
So if they have a hundred beds, then there'd be thirty-six thousand, five hundred, um, opportunities for, for beds.
Okay.
Are you looking at item seven B, Matt? Is that what you're seeing?
So I'm on page, sorry, forty-six of it, and it's highlighted right in the middle of the page is where it says.
It's seven B in parentheses.
Correct, seven B. Yes, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, all they have is six hundred, or sixty-eight thousand percent.
And it took me a few minutes to figure out what that was.
Yeah.
So are we approving these or is this just informational for us?
From, from my understanding, this is just a, a presentation at the time being, and then there, I believe it's a, a ten-day waiting period, uh, for a decision to be made.
Okay. So right now we're just receiving them?
Do we like correct the typo? Because they just, I mean, it's just a typo. Do we correct that for them? Does it matter?
Good question. Um, I do not know on date wise where they've got to be filed for, um, by December thirty-first. If that would create an issue or if, if we would do that, I would leave that up to a legal team to decide that.
Okay, you'll follow up with them to clarify that then.
Right legal team? Sure, yep.
They're happy about that. All right, then.
I think it's supposed to be fifty-six point four percent.
That would make some sense.
That would be more logical than sixty-eight thousand percent.
Which one is it?
Fifty-six.
It's, uh, Orchard Park.
Orchard Park?
Orchard Park, yep.
Thirty-one hundred, south forty-eight.
I put money on it that, that Orchard Park has fifty-six percent of, of Medicaid beds in use. Totally believe that. All right.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioners, next item is our public hearing. Item four, the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Matt Talbot Kitchen Outreach, Lex Center for the Arts, Bethel Baptist Church, Mount Zion Baptist Church, Great Plains Annual Conference of the United Methodist Church, Troop Twelve Foundation Incorporated, Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, Center Point Incorporated, and Nebraska Wesleyan University.
Now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exempt applications? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Item five A is the public hearing action item on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six is public comment.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Item seven is adjournment.
Will be adjourned?
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.